It's seven o'clock on the second Tuesday of the month. The date and time set aside for the regular meeting of the Nacusa County Council. Take roll call please.
Brian?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Come?
Here.
Bering?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Beretta?
Here.
I'm here, Garrett?
Here.
I entertain a motion to approve the previous common council minutes.
Move second.
Motion second to approve the previous common council minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, treasurer's report and entertain a motion to approve.
Move second.
Motion second to approve the treasurer's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Both. Next item on the agenda is the citizens forum, I would guess that's why most everybody's here. I understand that most of you are probably here regarding the ambulance issue. Is there anyone here or any other topic?
I could just throw out that we will have a pumpkin fest this year.
Yes. Yeah, I saw that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's great. Good to hear. All right, what the, what I guess I'd like to do is maybe lay a little ground, ground rules, not necessarily, but try to limit your comments, five minutes or so. Keep it civil, we're not here to get into a brawl. We do want to hear what you have to say. So, that being said. Anyone have something, anything they'd like to say? Okay, back.
Compared to our meeting and chairperson. I would, before we start commenting here, I would like to hear the agreement between the city of Nacusa and Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department going forward before my township and a half a dozen others can judge what's gonna happen to us. I mean, there's room to get us under that umbrella. We're on our own. If you can, you know, explain what's going on between you and Rapids.
Well, we.
Correct your signs.
We have not yet.
Or you're about to.
Well, what I was planning to do would be to have the 2022 ambulance contract with City of Rapids as an agenda item under the business. And that's where I would like to take the discussion.
Right.
Okay, so, and basically get through our procedural stuff, committee reports and such, before we get to that. That we can devote the rest of the time to that.
I guess, I'm certain I speak for the majority of people.
Right.
Great concern. For welfare of their towns.
I understand.
Who we represent.
I understand. Yes.
Did you guys negotiate with any other ambulance service?
No, we're contracted. Oh, why not?
Maybe got it cheaper?
That's the level of service that they provide.
Why, why can't United am the skill? Or you need check?
No, we didn't solicit one from them, no.
Why not?
Well, speaking for myself, I didn't think United would be great for the city.
Well, you wouldn't know unless you.
I'm concerned about.
So this is a one-party bid then, that's what you're saying, one-party bid, right? Or a three-party bid?
There's not a, there's, there's not two or three parties that would be able to service.
United can.
From Grand Rapids.
Yes. Which I bet you they're just as fast as what Rapids will be to get somebody here.
Well, I, I can't speak to the response time that way, but just judging by distance.
Well, you should have, you should have negotiated, at least talked to other ambulance services just besides Rapids. Give them a chance. So otherwise it's cut and dry on who are you gonna have, and that's it.
I'm sort of trying to figure out what's really going on, because I've heard all kinds of crap out there. And from what I'm understanding is Rapids will take over for the Nacusa ambulance department, and the department will just, will be basically shut down. And then we get our service calls out of Rapids. That's what I'm understanding.
Yeah. If you would call nine-one-one, Scotts Rapids would be paged to the call.
And another question I would have, if you don't mind. Is Rapids gonna have an ambulance stationed here?
No.
So we have to wait for them to come out of Wisconsin Rapids?
And. Jason, could you average response time? That. Is that not fair question?
No, it, it is a fair question. There's a lot of factors when it comes into response times. Obviously, response times during the snowstorm. During summer, day. The other factor is the acuity of the nine-one-one request. So for a call such as a lip assist, where the person is not injured, but is requesting EMS, that's typically a non-emergent response. Versus somebody who's having chest pain, difficult breathing, a higher acuity level, that's gonna get an emergent response. That's much different. We can certainly hold the response times that we have had in the last few months coming into Nacusa. Provide them.
I guess one thing that I maybe would like to say to all of you that may not be aware of the fact that apparently the Rapids ambulance is actually covering a lot of our calls right now. Because we don't have the staff to cover all the available hours.
A minute. So this ambulance has been here a long time. Forty's, right? For take?
Forty days.
This ambulance service has evolved through all of the stuff, from a basic to a critical care paramedic. This was a really functional service. And I know that when some townships backed out on contract negotiations, that hurt our bottom line. Speaking as a member of this department and a chief of this department. That was manageable. So bills were paid, money worked. We still had, at the time, I don't know, we're up to like forty-two critical care paramedics. Well, thirty-ish. And does that other level licenses? So something in the last two years has corrupted this whole process monetarily. Pay for critical care paramedics has gone backwards. It's not an option. That's the highest license level in the country. And you have them here living in your town, in your community. About eight or nine, I don't even know how many, communities around here have kind of made their, their plan based on this service being here. And it feels like it's kind of been a two months ago, we were told they're gonna raise the rate, okay? Or for that, that's fine. And now we hear secondhand that actually there's not an ambulance. It impacts a lot of people, a lot of communities, a lot of plans. And I know for you guys, it's cool, because you got a, a great, Rapids are a great service, like, give you that. They're not gonna come to Armenia. Well, they maybe will, take them forty-five minutes to get there. It's very irritating and frustrating to watch this crumble. You had so many good members, you had so much good leadership for years. And I, I don't know where it fell apart, but it did. It's if it's strictly money, I mean, we were told a few months ago, when, when the chief came out to our township that you had failed to raise retainers for what, six years, nobody said?
Yeah, at least.
Yeah, well, six percent a year for six years is thirty-six percent more of your revenue. For eight communities, that's a lot of money.
That was already in our contract.
Yeah. Nobody was ever changing anything. So you, you've had its cost order on the service. The contract accommodated that, and nobody did anything with it. Did you wanna see it fail, is my thought? Because that's where it sits right now.
I mean, they came to our meeting in Armenia with a sixteen dollar per capita offer. And we knew when they said that, that that was way lowball, and we didn't understand how they could even operate with that. And we're willing to do business, I mean, we have to provide a service. And so does Cranmore and Finley and, and Port Edwards and we're hung out the dry now, Rapids, they're a fine service, don't get me wrong. But they're not gonna come out with Finley in Armenia. They've even turned Cranmore down, from my understanding, already, or, or. What are we supposed to do, go to Washington? Thirty-five miles to the north end? And they won't even take them to the Rapids hospital, they'll take them down to Washington. We're gonna have people dying, we're gonna have people getting hold in the back of pickup trucks to the hospital. Because of mismanagement somewhere, and I'm not pointing the finger, Dan, at you, we've talked on the phone. But there, and this has been mismanaged somewhere. The price of doing business is up around thirty-six dollars per capita. We would have been willing to pay that. They came in with sixteen bucks, knowing Saratoga and Rome and two of the other townships over there were going. It didn't make sense when they came. But I, I don't know who's drumbling the ball or, or trying to hide the ball under the cups, but we're willing to work with you guys, and we're willing to keep the service, but somebody's gonna tell the truth here, somebody's dropping the ball.
Well, I would say, hey, yada Armenia, because at least they got notice about the found out about this yesterday, yesterday, because your ambulance chief was good enough to notify us in Cranmore, because we aren't like the town of Port Edwards, who have people that work in your city and knew about these rumblings, and had time to go out and look. We have a little over forty-five days, because you're gonna shut down to find an ambulance service, which we are required by law to provide. And there aren't a lot of options out there. Pittsville's already turned me down, they're already covering three hundred square miles and eleven jurisdictions and are understaffed, just like Nacusa is, just like United is. Lisa Raisin also on my town board, she called Rapids yesterday, and you know what they told her? Well, I don't know, if we get to Nacusa, we're not sure how we're gonna cover that, so I don't know that we can take you guys on. Did you even tell Rapids when you went to them and said, hey, could you give us a price? And by the way, when we shut down, four other townships are screwed and have zero ambulance service? What are we supposed to do, do you guys even care? It's, it's, it's infuriating that you seem very selfish, and there was no notice. If you've been talking about this for months, I heard that you guys said, well, we don't have to tell them anything until we make it official, so.
Who told you that?
What's that?
Who told you that?
Your ambulance chief, who was the one that was good enough to give us a courtesy notice of this meeting tonight, that this was even happening. We wouldn't have found out.
Punch chief was discussing with you, with this with you the whole time this was going on.
Somehow that communication got dropped.
We reached out to the ambulance chief over the weekend when we heard rumblings of this, and he could not give us an answer, because he said he had to hear from you guys.
And I was told the only reason Port, Town of Port Edwards had time to get bids from two other places and voted last night to go with one of those, was because they have somebody that works in the city or has been at committee meetings and heard this. So this is a big giant surprise to Town of Cranmore, and we've been good enough to take, for you to take our money all these years and supported the ambulance service and enjoyed the service, and I get it, it's about money, but there's a lot of other things.
It's not just about money though, it's about people. We can't get people to get on the service. You're only offering six dollars for the money you want.
And then.
Listen to me, you, they're, they're saying we've gotta pay them fifty to twenty dollars an hour, because they go to McDonald's. I said, that's not part of the volunteer service.
Right. Well, and that's, that's business everywhere, so I totally understand that, but that, that's my point, and I think Jim's point was, if you would have come to us six months ago, or whenever you found out Rome was leaving and saying, we can't keep this service going at the rate you're charging you, we totally were willing to negotiate. And now, that's not even on the table, because we had no idea, and now I'm writing a letter to Shane Blazer, begging him to even give us a chance, and having United give a, we're gonna be over a barrel for, if anybody will take us, what they're gonna charge.
Could I just say that I am not affiliated with the ambulance, I did work at the hospital, so I know that minutes are brain matter. I wish all of you would think about that. And then the other thing is if this, if the public works department was good enough to send us a letter, not once, but twice, that they would be changing our, our garbage collection, and we got no notice of this. You guys, every single one of you know that's wrong. Every single one of you.
I like, we decided yesterday to do this. It's been a discussion point for the last year and a half.
It should have been by what?
Every, every, every meeting is noticed, every agenda item is noticed. We don't, how, do we?
So the townships that pay you.
We pay you every year for this.
And we're supposed to keep up on what, what's on your agendas, when we have our own towns to run?
Kind of your job.
I don't think you guys realize what our families put up with us, and what they have to sacrifice. I'm an EMT basic, I make barely seven dollars an hour to save people's lives. I understand that there's not a lot of money out there. But it's not all those members that have failed the service. I have not seen, we have asked you members to come to several of our meetings. I know maybe a couple have. No one has come to us. We found out last night, you guys think you didn't find out? We found out at our meeting last night at six o'clock that as of January, we will not have a job. So you think you were kept in the dark, so were we as members.
We're gonna be breaking the law if we can't find a, a provider.
So.
Go ahead.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is you've had discussions, but you've had them with apparently the wrong people. But if you're going to affect the communities, you should be reaching out and touching them face to face, have those negotiations. Not just put a meeting notice up and expect people to come and say, oh, I saw your notice. Because I don't look at your notices, I wait till I hear that there's something to go for, I don't look at your website. I don't get anything on Facebook from the Nacusa. So when you communicate with the public, they don't know. But when you have contracts, you've gotta talk to the communities, the community leaders, because they're the one that make the decisions. It's not us. They can't, we can't put money aside, it's communities themselves. This does not look like a, a, a discussion with the proper people.
In nineteen ninety-three, I was in a terrible car accident. If it wouldn't have been for an Nacusa ambulance, I would be dead right now. The response time was fast. I died in the ambulance, an out-of-body experience. They saved my life. These volunteers saved my life, guys. If you would have had a contract with Rapids, they could not have got there in time, I would have been dead since ninety-three, I guarantee it. That's just how it is, you are dealing with lives. And then, I wish you'd take your own advice in this. As the president of the pumpkin fest, I came to you guys last spring. I said, I think we're gonna have to shutter now. You guys says, why don't you recruit? Why don't you recruit and try to solicit money? I listened to you. I went back to our committee, I listened to you. I had five members drop out, I've got ten that wanna join right now. I have funding enough to have the pumpkin fest next year. You guys gave me that advice. So, and another thing, my daughter-in-law's been on the ambulance service for nineteen years. I found out about this yesterday. Just like these guys. So the word did not get out, and I come to a lot of your meetings, mostly about pumpkin fest, but it didn't get out. Maybe if you had a Facebook page, it would get out more. But I don't get on the internet and look at all the meetings. And I worked for the city for almost seven years before we, you got wrecked. I resigned and you hired Rick, so, I mean, the word did not get around to the community. If it would have got around to the community, you would have had to have it at the community center tonight, you'd probably have five hundred people there. I just hope you reconsider. And try to keep this service going, it's a heck of a service.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, the way the model's working now, it, it's not, it's not sustainable.
Otherwise, it's cut and dry, that we're gonna have Rapids for an ambulance service.
Why don't you take your advice you gave me?
We've been, we've, we've been trying.
Have you got the word out? I put it, as a pumpkin fest, ever taking your advice, I got it on the website, I got it on Facebook, I put it on the radio, I put it on the TV. I solicited members. I had more volunteers this year, we lost our, our help at the prison, because, or the jail, because they were sick. It works, it works to get the word out. You can't keep it here in this little building and expect people to show up to the meeting to find out about it, you've gotta get the word out, guys. I did exactly what you told me to do, and look at the pumpkin fest now.
Right, but.
When something is important in your personal life, you find ways to make it happen. This is important to this community, and you need to find a way to make it happen. Maybe realignment of the, of what we had, maybe something else has to change. This is probably one of the most important things in our community, and you need to make it happen.
Try to solicit some funds. If this goes on, I'll make, I'll make a commitment right now, my wife and I will personally give the ambulance service five hundred dollars of our personal money. And I think you'd get a lot more, you have to solicit.
I was completely unaware that an EMT basic made seven bucks an hour. No wonder you don't have people.
But do you realize they make seven dollars an hour for every hour that they're on call, not? They could be, I guess.
Families for seven dollars an hour, they spend their time away from their families, sleeping in a, in a room. And, and I, I know some live in the community, and so some have response at home, but not all of them.
And even the ones at home, they're still, they still have to be on call, they still have to be ready to go. That doesn't allow them to just.
Maybe you have heard me before too, but the surrounding townships, we're willing to pay the price to keep the service going.
Have you thought of a referendum, if this conversations have been going on, why? Why wasn't a referendum brought to the community to say, our ambulance service needs funds?
Exactly.
We voted for a sports complex, so our kids can play football and soccer and track. Don't you think that we would like an ambulance to be there when those kids get hurt? Don't you think the community would have supported a referendum to help with the funding? As Bill said, you have to ask, you have to reach out, you can't keep the conversations quiet, you have to ask the people who are willing to help.
Oh.
The other thing we have to think about here is, Wisconsin Rapids, they are, are a fine service, no doubt about it. But now you're stretching them, then, too. Somebody's gonna be down here, something happened on the north end of their range up there. And it all, we can't keep stretching things as then. There's a cost to do business, we have to reach that cost and do business. Your surrounding communities are willing to do that, but we need to be informed about how it's gonna happen.
Or is there an option to have a transition period, so that those of us who are hung out to dry right now have a little more time to work on this, you know? These other services just can't say, hey, yep, we can start in thirty days, no problem, like that. This is gonna take restructuring on their part, too. It's not like just going two blocks to the next coffee shop, there's not a lot of choices here.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple points is no, Nacusa has some of the finest paramedics around, and some of the finest people around, that's not in dispute. Many of them are my friends. But these comments are based in emotion, and I appreciate it, and I wish we'd have this more often. But facts are also facts. The city of Wisconsin Rapids right now is handling a significant portion of Nacusa ambulance calls. I deal with it when I'm at work. I see it all the time. The city of Rapids is charging us a bill, we're nine days into the month of November, and we owe them several thousand dollars. Because we don't staff an ambulance. I understand the response time, it took Nacusa ambulance almost a half an hour to get to my house. I live five blocks that way. This is terrible. Nobody wants to be in this position, but we are, and we have to deal with it. I don't see how we can sustain that ambulance service.
I've been a member here since July of ninety-four on this service. And I, I have been part of us going from a basic service to the intermediate service, to an I-99 service, and to a critical care paramedic service. And every time we went to that next level, we had meetings with the council on how to do that, how to recruit people, and how to keep it viable. Not once in this last year have we been to find out how to fix this and what's going on. I've never been contacted by anybody on the council to find out how we can fix this, what's wrong, how, how to, how to make this work. Not once. And this is even more important than going from basic to intermediate to I-99 to paramedic. This is eliminating an ambulance service, something I've done for the last almost twenty-eight years, and plan to put thirty years in more in. You know, my wife is a critical paramedic on this service for the last fifteen years. My son's on the fire department, our whole family is part of EMS in this town. And I heard about this officially last night at seven o'clock. Six o'clock at our meeting. That is nothing but disrespect to the members of our service who have put the time and effort in. We have some good people on this service who wanna see it continue and to make it work, but we have not been given any tools, any help, nothing. And to be honest with you, I wasn't even gonna come tonight, because I know it's gonna be a done deal. No matter what people say here, no matter what anybody says, the vote's gonna be no, and they're gonna go to Rapids. I mean, and as far as funding, has anybody looked into getting grants? Of anything? Nobody has talked to anybody on this service about how to make it work.
Also, not only do we pay your base rate, but you charge us back for their retirement program. And other services are, it's looking like, don't do that. So not only have we paid for the base rate, but we've shared in your costs to provide that retirement for the paramedics and the EMTs and everybody that qualifies for that program and their service.
What, what would happen if we went back to an EMT service?
We're already there. We have a, we have a, what's called a flex license. So if we have a paramedic that's on the call, they can still do paramedic. These, I guess, whatever you wanna call it. But if not, then we run as a basic ambulance.
Would you be able to recruit more people? It's, it's less, it's less education, less, fewer classes? More time away from your regular job and your family?
I don't, I don't see that there's, that are, there are people, we've.
I guess my question to you then is, why did we hire those five new people last month, if you already knew you were shutting this down? That was not fair to them.
Yeah, we weren't, we didn't know at that time. We've only, we've only reached out to Rapids, we're, we're trying to do what's best for the citizens of Nacusa. We didn't think of everybody else.
You must have been negotiating for more than just this last week, if you come up with a million something contract.
We weren't negotiating. We asked, we asked them for a bit.
I'm, I'm from Finley, and I.
I'm, I'm from Finley and I have notes in here from back in August. We knew that you were kind of struggling and that there was gonna be some stuff going forward. And it was our time to resign our contract. We, like, everybody else seems to be willing to work with you. Our contract went up $200 for a year. And we were willing to work with you. We both wet our pants when we heard you're only gonna charge us an extra $200.
See, we got, I mean, Mr. Mayor, we got stung a few years ago. How long ago was that? When we tried to go on a full-time, three, what, three full-time people on day shift? We asked and we tried to, we tried to get, negotiate contracts and everybody was mad because our, our rates were gonna go up. I think it was 26 bucks maybe back then.
That wasn't even correct.
A lot of years ago, yeah, well.
Process was not done correctly.
And it, it was, the process was, yeah, and people were stunned. People were, you know, coming out of the woodwork with not what they didn't want to hear. And it just threw a wrench into everything. We just stopped. We just said, okay, we'll just do what we can do. And then that, then we had two, two entities pull out. That screwed us some more. We had to move money around in the comp and the budget to try to keep going.
Would you rather have people stunned, pardon me, would you rather have people stunned but know what's going on than?
And, and I'm not trying to, I'm, I'm not trying to justify what we did or what was done or throw the goal, anybody to the rules. What I'm saying is, is that we've got what we've got right now. We've gotta work with what we've got. Do we go down to basic and, and maybe get some more people to come in and, and try to, and try to work with the outside? Who knows? But we, what we trying to do now is to get somebody to cover us full-time.
Well, can I ask what monetarily, 10, 20 years ago, we paid the bills, right? We always paid the bills.
Because we had all the different.
The chief was in charge of all of that task. The chief was in charge of the contracts too and went to meet with the Phil Browns of the world and whoever else it might have been at the time. And he said, you know, this year we're looking at maybe upgrading. It's gonna cost us more money. Are you willing? And we explained this stuff and communities are receptive to it all the time. We butted heads once in a while, but very minimally. I did this for seven years as the chief here. I went through a lot of these. We make a budget that accommodates the cost of running the service. And then we figure out how much a retainer has to be to make that happen. And that works. When I asked our current chief what any of that is, he says he doesn't know any of those numbers. That's not his option. He has to know every one of these things. How much it costs for fuel, how much it costs for supplies, what the outlets are supposed to be. He has to know things. If he doesn't know it, you guys don't know. If he doesn't know it, we don't know. And right now, we're on the butt end of this deal. It's not very good. There's ways to fix things, guys.
Just a reference, someone brought up the referendum and I did contact our, our financial person. And he ran some numbers for me. This is just based on real, basic, not detailed, but round of ballpark figures. For, for us to say, for instance, have a full-time staff, cost per thousand. Be about $25.
Well, pay it.
$25, $25 per thousand dollars your house, so.
The $25, it's a mill rate is what he's talking.
I know.
Yeah, not the, not the.
So, so a hundred thousand, a hundred thousand dollar house would cost you another $1,000 a year in property tax.
But you're just talking the city in Nacousses.
That's how it'd have to be, yeah.
Why, why wouldn't you disperse that out to the other townships?
Disperse, what, what are you?
You're saying it's gonna cost $25,000, $1,000 for the city in Nacousses to go full-time EMS? Is that what you're saying? Correct me if I'm wrong. Okay, so are you incorporating the other townships paying for that full-time service also or are you just figuring the city in Nacousses?
Another 3,000 people in Armenia or Edwards, Franmore and Finley.
That's, yeah.
Well, yeah, obviously.
A lot less than that.
Obviously, you know, you got, you count back revenues and things like that, but it's, it's still a tremendous amount of money. It's a life.
A life, it is a life. It would have been my life. It would have been. Yeah, oh, yeah.
Just, just anecdotal. In the, in the, the time that Rapids has been covering some of our calls, they've actually been first responders, calls from Rapids. Let live it.
Yes, they would have been.
I think I will see if you can, you can't say that.
I sure can.
Well. I think we're kind of going over and over the same thing.
I think you already made your decision.
We do have discussion when the item comes up on the agenda.
I just ask that you do discuss it and you do take in a quote, whatever is said here. In my mind, you can't make a final ruling on this tonight and, and you're gonna, you're gonna have to take some part of the input into account.
Okay, like I said, that in the beginning, I wanted to kind of limit the discussion in this portion. And when we get to the topic on the agenda, that's when we can have some back and forth.
Was it your intent, plan, trying to contract this meeting going or what?
I don't know that for sure.
Roger.
Yes, sir.
Chief McLean, Camp Douglas ambulance, um, I'd like to thank the gentleman who did call me and let me know what was going on. That has allowed me to re-stage my personnel. The last several days, last several weeks, we've been getting called into Armenia and Finley fairly regularly. Our territory is long and tall. We sit, we station more towards Camp Douglas and less towards the CEDO. If it wasn't for that gentleman's phone call, we would have had almost a 45-minute response time to several critical calls up in Armenia. What are we looking at in the near term? Because I gotta be able to determine staffing levels for my service to be able to provide the coverage that we're providing for Armenia and Finley right now. So what is the near term, long term for that side of the territory?
Well, I, I can't speak for the ambulance chief. But I would assume that we would continue to, at least business as usual till the end of the year.
One and a half.
So would anybody else that hasn't had a chance to speak like this be, before we move on? We will be coming back.
So what did Rapids say? What's the response time for come here?
Well, like I, like I said, like Jason said, you can't put a number specifically on it.
Approximate?
I would, I would say 10 minutes, 10 to 12 minutes at the most. Again, we can hold some calls. We've been covering for the last five months, so we come in Nacousses quite often. We can hold some calls, get more numbers, but I would be, I would be very, very safe saying that, 10 minutes.
But without going through a full year with trains and weather, you can't.
Trains and weather are gonna, are gonna hinder that. Absolutely. I mean, trains and weather could hinder Nacousses, not here, depending on where they're going off.
What's the best case scenario for Finley then, for Rapids?
You got calls going and they're covering, so we start talking Finley and Armenia, you're looking at 20 or 30 minutes.
Then 10, 15 minutes to stabilize and 25 minutes back.
And our NACO station's only about 10 minutes.
In fact, there's been times where you heard calls to Camp Douglas because of the area and, you know, it just, it doesn't. And I'm sorry, the people of towns Franmore and Finley and Armenia, it's not like we wouldn't want to cover you, but here's the thing. I mean.
You're stretched for this?
We're stretched in, but I mean, the thing is, we really are doing an injustice to people that sit in your townships by being your responding ambulance because of the timeframe it takes, it would take for us to get there. And that just would be unfair for people that are sitting there waiting for us to come down there. And that's where, that's, that's just me talking the truth.
We're better off loading our own people in our own vehicles and driving ourselves with this.
You know, I think you have options with, with Camp Douglas here if they're gonna stage in the CEDO. I think those are.
We do, they have a heck of a turf too to cover. And sometimes they only got one squad.
I just wanna say, as a, just kind of a newcomer to the community over the past several years, it's, it is a shame to kind of see such an elite service crumble and get to where it's at right now. However, I have noticed over the past couple of years how things have kind of been lax in the amount of times that the city of Wisconsin Rapids has come to the city in Nacousses as a mutual aid. More often than not lately. However, I guess, was, was there ever a discussion with the city of Wisconsin Rapids about if they were to stage one of their ambulances in our bays here? Also, maybe what we would pay and then the surrounding townships adding into that, that we could, I guess, all use Wisconsin Rapids service at that time if they were to be willing to put up that rate here?
We haven't read any numbers like that, but I can, I could probably use numbers that were used in town room and when they, when they say there's going in there and you're looking at anywhere from $60 to $70 per capita. I realize you'd have to get an ambulance, our last ambulance cost a quarter million dollars. And now you're gonna have to, you're gonna keep people there 24 hours. You're gonna have to have at least two and three shifts of that. So you're talking six people and, you know, depending upon what they get paid, you know, your roll, with rollups and things like that, you're looking at anywhere from $80 to $100,000 per person. So now you're looking at $900,000 or a million dollars and.
Million dollar a year business.
That doesn't even include the cost of doing business.
Right.
A year ago, a case of gloves cost $16. Now it'd be $16 for a piece of our gloves. A simple N-95 mask used to be pennies, you know, 40, 50 cents. Now they're $3 and $4. I mean, that's, that doesn't include the cost of, of business from a day-to-day perspective. That's, that's just to get off the ground. So I, I feel your pain. It's, it's probably one of the most expensive things you, township. Concerns that you would have about Wisconsin Rapids. You know, we've got guys on duty 24/7. There's always anywhere from eight to 11 people on duty. And we, coming out of the West Side Station, and I think you'd be surprised at our, our, our response times. I really do, I think. And you would see that we were as equivalent with what you're figuring. Very close. We come out of that station and come out of Wisconsin Rapids, you get two paramedics on every single call. And every paramedic is a critical care paramedic or a cash accredited ambulance. What does that mean? We're the first one in the state to be cash accredited. There's only two in the state. There's only 170 in the nation. What cash accreditation means is they, they keep our feet to the ground, make sure that we do QA and we make sure that we're, we're running things the way it should be ran, that our SOGs are followed and that, you know. We're making sure we follow our guidelines and on every single call. So, I mean, there's, trying to sell us because we are, I think, a service. And don't get us wrong. The best thing that happened is, is your service worth stating business. We, we tried for the last five months. We helped them out. First three months, we didn't even charge them, just a mutual aid, but it got to a point where we were, we were coming out a lot. And it's not fair to the citizens of Wisconsin Rapids to bear that financially either. So we had to come up with something for these last two months and that's what the agreement comes with. So, again, a lot of the people that worked on Nacousses, I could have talked somewhere along the line and Jason, you know, some of them precepted with us. A lot of people on Nacousses ambulance who could do it, who can try to come in here and take this, ask the group before we do. And so that we can, our partners and the communities around us, you know, save all schools of camp.
Okay, just one thing and I'll get out of your ear. Sitting here listening, find out what really happened. I honestly, honestly think the lackluster leadership of this board and its communication style has totally screwed over the Nacousses ambulance department and the taxpayers who pay the bill. There should have been more communication. There should have been two bids, not one. No state agency even goes with a one bid. They get more than one. I'm just, as a taxpayer, sorely disappointed at what you did wrong. And with that, I gotta go before I say anything else. Have fun, gentlemen.
Anyone else? Okay, let's get the.
I just, I would like to see you get the word out before you make a decision. I mean, like I said, I knew yesterday. I don't, I don't think it's gotten better. I think they have the, they have the, I mean, they can, they can table it. They don't have to vote today. They can table it. Get some more people, do some outreach. I just hate to see you voting down. And I mean, Ryan, you had a point there. There's been a lot of calls, but this young lady was standing here a few minutes ago and soon as I heard her pager, she was gone. Yeah, there's a lot of good response times too.
There's, there's, there.
They've been outstanding.
There, there, there are a lot of very dedicated members of the Nacousses service, but there are not enough.
Right, so that's why you have to refuse. Yeah, if the word got out, you would have.
Would you have went ahead and ask the people what they're willing to pay to keep the service alive?
That's all. I won't say anymore.
All right, let's move on to committee reports. First committee report is.
So you're gonna put a number on somebody's life?
Yeah. I don't know that I'd put it that way, but you're, you're, you do it.
I just think the ambulance is a very important.
It's not like we won't. If, if we go with the Rapids, it's not like we don't have service.
I understand.
Very good service.
But you have patients that have a heart attack or stroke. I mean, every second is critical.
And we'll, and we've also have first responders through the fire department available. So right now, for instance, we have a day when nobody signed up for call. I have a heart attack. I'm waiting for Rapids or the first responders show up. That's, that's, that's the, that's the situation we're in. And I don't see, I don't see it improving.
That's the situation you've allowed it to become. At the situation you're in. Lesser men, when you people at that table have changed bigger things.
We're gonna move on to the committee reports then. We'll get into the actual discussion.
Final commission and one meeting last month. I moved to through the minister.
Also, second to through the minister, like commission meeting. All in favor?
I'm aware members in the Kusakama Council Planning Commission meeting was held on Tuesday, October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, six P M. Nukusa Council Chambers. Members present were Dan Carlson, Chairperson Joseph, Second City Clerk. Larry Krupsek, Gerald Corris, Rick Schmidt, Terry Schramansky, Curtis Breda and Brad Hamilton. Also in attendance were Garrett Coon from G K Parks and Service, Dan Hoffmeister. Police Chief Sean Woods and Brian Krupsek. Item one, discuss Garrett Coon's request to amend existing conditional use for his property located at one-ten Hillcrest Lane to include. Outside stores for up to six tractors, boats, equipment for repairs only on tax parcel. Three zero dash zero zero seven six one, specific. Item two, it's City Attorney Nick Apps. Discuss possible planned unit development ordinance for the city municipal code. Item three, we remove the municipal code one point one six, planning commission at six. And it says six two point two three with the city attorney Nick Abs. No action necessary.
Next, the committee report.
Me the whole had two meetings this month, November second and October nineteenth. Move to adopt the reports as presented.
Second, also sent it out the two reports to the committee, the whole, all in favor?
October nineteenth, the Honorable Mayor and members of the Kusakama Council. Meeting was held Tuesday, October nineteen, twenty twenty-one at six thirty P M. The council chambers member present were Dana Patterson. Mayor Joseph Rush, the second clerk, Mike Come, Larry Krupsek, Dan Downing, Garrett Coon, Brad Hamilton. Brian Krupsek by his own. Curtis Breda and Nick Abs, City Attorney. Also in attendance were Rick Schmidt, D P W, Fire Chief Mike Archie, Assistant Fire Chief Dave Rein Schmidt. Ambulance Chief Joe Kurtzmer, Police Chief Sean Woods and Nukusa Ambulance, Joe Kaiser. Item one, recommend sending letters to City of Wisconsin, request, City of Wisconsin Rapids requesting twenty twenty-two ambulance service. Item two, recommend credit card resolution for Heather Elser as the new community center coordinator. Senior Community Center Coordinator. Item three, discuss twenty twenty-two city budget with John Trautman, C P A, Clifton Larson. Next meeting scheduled for eleven, two, two, twenty twenty-one, five P M. Any questions? I move to adopt items one and two. Yes, one of two, right? We just discussed.
And wanted to.
This is next, sorry, that's next. Both together, right? Okay, so I move to adopt items one and two. Second item.
Second to that items one and two, the first committee, the whole report, we have a roll call please.
Ryan?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Hearing?
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
Breda?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
I vote yes. Coon?
Yes.
I'm aware members of the Kusakama Council Committee, the whole meeting was held on Tuesday, November two, twenty twenty-one, five P M. Nukusa Council Chambers. Members present were Daniel Carlson, Jefferson. Joseph Rush, the Second City Clerk, Larry Krupsek, Brian Krupsek, Adam Behring, Mike Come, Curtis Breda, Dan Downing, Garrett Coon, Brad Hamilton. Also in attendance were John Trautman, C P A, Clifton Larson. Fire Chief Mike Archie, Assistant Fire Chief Dave Rein Schmidt, Police Chief Sean Woods, Ambulance Chief Joe. Al Marco and Joe Kaiser. Item one, met with John Trautman, C P A, Clifton Larson and City Department Heads regarding twenty twenty-two city budget. City of Budget Adoption is set for Tuesday, November thirtieth at six P M. Item two, recommend preliminary levy of one million four hundred eighty thousand nine hundred six dollars for twenty twenty-two city operations. Any questions? I move to adopt item two.
Second.
Motion to second to adopt item two, the second committee, the whole report, give a roll call please.
Okay. Larry?
Yes.
Hearing?
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
Breda?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Yes.
Coon?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Next committee report, Ways and Means, Chairman.
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nukusakama Council. Ways and Means Committee Meeting was held on eleven, nine, twenty twenty-one at six thirty in the council chambers. Members present were Dan Downing, Chairman. Brian Krupsek, Secretary Garrett Coon. Adam Behring. Also in attendance were Mayor Dan Carlson, Rick Schmidt with E P W. Brad Hamilton, Mike Come, Curtis Breda, Larry Krupsek. Also, there was an attached list of attendees. Item number one, recommend approval of the various bills. And item number two, recommend approval of beverage operators license for. Reese Billman, Hunter Billman and Madeline Waldeck for G P M investments. I make a motion that we recommend or recommend item one and item two.
Motion to second to adopt items one and two of the Ways and Means Committee. Roll call please.
Hearing?
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
Breda?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Yes? Coon?
Yes.
Groups, Brian?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Next committee report, public work.
Public work says what needs to be.
Second.
Motion to second to accept the minutes of the public work committee report, all in favor?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nukusakama Council, Public Work Committee Meeting was held on Tuesday, November second, twenty twenty-one at five forty-five P M. In the Nukusakama. Chambers. Members present were Larry Krupsek, Chris Breda, Adam Behring and Brad Hamilton. Also in attendance were Mayor Dan Carlson, Brian Krupsek, Garrett. Dan Downing, Michael Come, Rick Schmidt from the D P W. Chief of Police Sean Woods, Ambulance Chief Joe Crutchmer, Al Marco, Todd Faulkner with D P W. Assistant Fire Chief Dave Rein Schmidt, Fire Chief Mike Archie, Joe Kaiser and Darla Allen with the library. Item one, discuss the closeout of Wood Avenue and Market Street project. Item two, recommend approval for well five rehabilitation and maintenance project with the municipal well and pump. Costs not to exceed nineteen thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. Item three, recommend we pay up to six thousand dollars as a fifty fifty project with downtown fence removal. And replacement at Riverside Park or Riverside Cemetery. Item four, recommend approval of the state municipal agreements for State Highway one seventy-three. That's Market Street and Wood Avenue for the D O T construction project of twenty twenty-two. And item five, discuss potential twenty projects for sewer water and roads. Any questions? If not, I move to adopt items two, three and four.
Second. Motion to second to adopt items two, three and four of the public works committee report.
Um, yes. Breda?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Yes? Coon?
Yes.
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 Behring?
Yes.
Next committee report, public safety, Chairman.
Public safety is one we need to report on. I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes.
Motion to second to accept the minutes of the public safety meeting, all in favor?
Honorable Mayor and members in the Kusakama Council, Public Safety Meeting was held November second, twenty twenty-one, six forty-five P M. In the Nukusa Council Chambers. Members present were Curtis Breda, Larry Krupsek, Brad Hamilton and Mike Come. Also in attendance were Police Chief Sean Woods, Fire Chief Mike Archie. Assistant Chief Dave Rein Schmidt, Ambulance Chief Joe Crutchmer, Garrett Coon, Brian Krupsek, Adam Behring. Mayor Dan Carlson, Joe Kaiser, Rick Schmidt of the D P W, Dan Downing and Al Marshall. Uh, item one, recommend accepting the resignation of Andrew Marks from the Police Department. Item two, review the ambulance statistics and staffing for the month. And item three, discuss the Wisconsin Rapids Fire Department coverage agreement. I recommend accepting item one.
Second. Motion to second to adopt item one of the public safety committee report, give a roll call please.
Breda?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
Yes, Coon?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Yes.
Hearing?
Yes.
Committee report, property recreation and human affairs.
Property recreation and human affairs has one meeting to present on. I make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Motion to second to adopt the minutes of the property recreation and human affairs committee report, all in favor?
To the Honorable Mayor and members of the Nukusakama Council. A property recreation and human affairs committee meeting was held on November second, twenty twenty-one at six fifteen P M. In the Nukusakama Council Chambers. Members present were Brian Krupsek, Dan Downing, Mike Come and Garrett Coon. Also in attendance were Mayor Dan Carlson, Larry Krupsek, Adam Behring, Curtis Breda, Police Chief Sean Woods, Ambulance Chief Joe Kurtzmer. Rick Schmidt of the D P W, Fire Chief Mike Archie, Assistant Chief Dave Rein Schmidt, Joe Kaiser. Library Director Darla, Darla Allen and Al Marco. Number one, recommend applying for legacy foundation grant for shelter building at Coulter Park. Two, discuss on development agreements in the city industrial park. Three, discuss on activities at city-owned property located at three fifty Peckham Road. Four, discuss and updates regarding S C Swiderski development at three fifty Peckham Road. Five, training equipment and seminars. I'd like to make a motion to adopt number one.
Second. Motion to second to adopt item one of the property recreation. Committee reports.
Downing?
Yes.
Yes, Coon?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Hearing?
Yes.
Come?
Yes.
Breda?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is old business. Is there any old business in this council? Bring down, move on to new business. First item is the. Twenty twenty-two ambulance contract with the city of Wisconsin Rapids. Got name copy of the proposal. Uh, for you in the audience, uh, what they are proposing is. Twenty-five dollars per capita, the first two years, twenty twenty-two and twenty-three and twenty-six. And the following two years, twenty-four, twenty-five. They will provide training for our first responders. Addition to that. Was it when they have two responders assist with the call and actually return some money to the city? For that. So I guess at this point. We're looking at. Todd, do you want to add anything?
Well, just some of the things that we are in the contractors. We're a training center, just like Midstate is. So their first responders will get all their continuing education free charge. Trainings monthly. They, if your CPR will be done free charge because we're, because we're the training center, we can do their CPR for them. Will do exchange on any EMS supplies they use that we carry. That includes filling up your oxygen bottles. For every call that we come into the area, if two first responders are on, at the end of the month, they'll receive a ten dollar stipend for each call that two first responder on back to. Responding agency. You already heard me before of our qualifications. We will get two paramedics on every call. When we hear that it's like difficulty breathing or chest pain. You get the three critical care paramedics. A very new fleet every three months or every three months, every three years, we're changing on ambulance, which means we just took. Took one in service. So we got a twenty-one, an eighteen, a fifteen and a twelve. And we are keeping the left, the other one just in case as a backup now that if we do get more area that if one goes down on the front line, those four. We can pull that one out of service and in an hour have it in ready and service to be able to stay at four ambulances all the time. You know, as far as our cash accreditation and stuff, we will, I mean, our first two ambulance this area comes out of station two. I'm very confident that we can be, you know, ten minutes at probably your longest point in, in city Nukusa and probably less at the closer points. You have any questions that you want to answer them? We, we looked at the per capita, um, state average per capita is thirty-five to forty-five dollars. That's the state average on per capita. There are areas that are sixty to eighty to ninety and there's areas that are less. And the reason we're not at the state average is. Look at your tax levy and we look at the median income and we readjust. You're still community partners to us in Wisconsin Rapids. They still spend time in Wisconsin Rapids. We're not here to indulge anybody. We're here to give you a good service. That was our intent when we put the proposal forward.
Anybody have a comment?
What are you going to do with the ambulance stuff that already?
I think at this point, if we decide to go with Rapids, Chief Archie. Is responsible for the first responder program. He has made mention that he would like to at least. Go through what is available and be, try to use whatever he can to quickly, or the first responders. We will probably keep one of the, one of the ambulances.
You've got one that's really terrible. Yeah, four total. But we got four total. One's really close to retirement, two of them. But the three of them, they're both, they're all, they're, they're all serviceable, but it's like you say, they get, they get old after, you know, they get old and they get beat up. It just doesn't take long. Service life, I promise. What do you think, chief, twelve years?
That's what we use on ours as well. We might be putting on a few more miles to put interfacility transport on the hospitals, hospital, hospital, to get on.
Ours get a lot of miles. Even the one would be the best one on the rigs and the other ones we probably put on. Uh, there's interest in one area that's got a, uh, emergency, what do you call them, first responders? First responders, they have, take one of them. Fire one of them. And then, uh. Make a first responder vehicle out of it, you know, an ambulance, first responder vehicle where they can get, you know, they can have a place to warm up if it's winter time or cool off in the summer. Get people to where they gotta go or whatever. You want sitting in there. If we don't want them, then they go on the auction site more likely.
I don't think anybody's questioning whether or not Rapids would be good or not. I think everybody knows that they'll be good. Um, I think like Bill said though, um, if the community knows that there's an issue and we put out there. That we need recruits to come in, you know, people to do this stuff. Maybe not everybody knows about it, you know, and if the whole community knows about it, maybe you get more volunteers.
Well, they, um, I guess it. Just for a point, I think the best recruiters would be our current employees.
But if there's no signs out there or anything that's, you know, stating, you know, put a big banner outside that says. We need volunteers. You know, we need.
Can I? Absolutely. You know, I'm with the top of our media. I'm a first responder, fire fighter on there. So I've worked with Nukusa for years. I've been approached numerous times to join their department. The reason why I didn't is frankly because of the pay. I can't justify coming to spend twenty-four hours, forty-eight hours, whatever it is here, my family. For paying seven dollar. When I made over double that at the service I work at right now. I'm just saying, you gotta want to keep your ambulance service. You gotta pay your people to keep them here. And if you're not willing to do that, that's what happens right now.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, as the.
I'm, I'm sorry, as the city attorney, with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I just want to speak up for a second. This is the time for the council to be discussing the motion. So the, the, the public comment portion has passed. If you guys have something to say about this based on what's going on, this is the time to talk about it or, or decide there's no discussion, then with the motion, just FYI.
And the question, and the question, I'm sorry, I was a negotiator for the state of Wisconsin. So I have a little meeting experience. Um, and there was questions asked earlier about referendums. Where did they fall?
You haven't done one because of the way, of the situation where.
Was brought up in earlier conversation.
But we've got, we've got from our, from our.
I did mention, I did mention that earlier.
Yeah, the CPA gave us how much it costs just the citizens of Nacusa to put on a $600,000 or $1 million per year. That's not what, that's just one time. We'd have to either thought it'd be every year, we'd have to renew it, or then it would be a renewable one, but it'd be an extra. That's, that's what we're looking at. And we can't, obviously we can't.
Looking at the contract right now, whether you're going to do it or not.
You were talking about.
From the attorney, he just said that we're on the motion to accept the contract or not.
We haven't made a motion. On the discussion, on the discussion.
The public was just cut off of that. Maybe it's something I didn't learn in school.
For mayor, if I may. What were the ramifications in this process? Table this tonight and bring it back another month.
Well, the ramifications for, for tabling that are, well legally speaking, the, the city certainly doesn't, doesn't have to pass it. I mean, the motion is, is out here for, for someone to make the motion and potentially pass it or, or it could fail, or you could table it. If you table it, I think the question is more, what are the, the sort of downstream legal ramifications? So for example, while and Fawn's not here anymore, but some suggestion was made, oh, but Finley actually.
Yes.
Then. Right, that other and, or that other towns may, because of the timing of things, have to go outside and, and Nacusa may be dealing with sort of a, a very different practical issue, uh, long term, because again, if the decision is going to be at the first of the year, one way or the other, and the towns don't have any, they don't, they don't have any certainty as to who's going to be covering it, then, then that's, it might affect whether or not, I think, it might affect whether or not you can even, um, take this action or what, what's going to be covered by, by Rapids or whether or not, you know, if you wait, Nacusa ambulance might be kind of in, in some sort of limbo. The budget is another aspect of it too, because you've gone through the budget and you're approving, you're approving a levy based on some of these, based on, on your conversation with Mr. Trumpman, based, based on, on some certain assumptions for next year. Uh, so that, I mean, those budget discussions are largely with him. I mean, there, there may be some consequences to, uh, action that is inconsistent with what the proposed budget is, and you would have to, you'd have to adjust the levy or, or change the budget, which.
Wait, we, we.
What would that action do in terms of the Rapids proposal?
Well, I can't answer, I, I mean, in terms of the Rapids proposal, my understanding is, is Rapids making a contract offer. I don't know that it is, uh, time, it's contingent on a particular time. I mean, I would assume that they would need to know before the date that they were going to start, if they were planning on starting it first. It, but the city can enter into a contract with, uh, with a third party at any time. So if, if Rapids, i- it's just a question of whether the, the two agree. So if Rapids is willing to start, if, if you, you tabled it and you couldn't, say you couldn't start until March 1st or something, that just depends on whether Rapids is willing to do that. If Rapids is going to say that there'd be no possibility that it's take it or leave it by this time, that's a, that's, that's more of a negotiating point of business decision. And then legally, the city would just have, would have to make sure it's covered somehow for ambulance services. Is that, that's your question? So the, I mean, the fact that it's coming this late in the year with the budget process having gone on is kind of what complicates matters as far as that goes.
Ask one more thing for. You guys have this proposal for Rapids. If for whatever reason you guys both know, if you even have a plan to go forward with the ambulance as we have now, if you guys both go and stay with your own service. I would. I would say it'd be that we don't have a. Because it's, it's my opinion that because of the way things have gone and the fact that we are now paying Rapids to cover us, we don't have a whole lot of choices. Because we're, we're, the, let's say the 9th of November, uh, we're approaching $10,000 already, a bill for City Rapids for the runs that they have covered that our ambulance should have been able to. We talked about how many people, uh, Joe, what's, how many, you know, uh, group? Members in the 30s active, 20, 22 to 25. So you know, we have, there are, there are numbers there, but not everybody's participated.
Why is that?
Good question. They were given a, um, is, was that January, yeah, January 1st, the ambulance chief required everyone that was available to have a minimum of 40, is it 48? 48 hours a call. Per month. And still we have open time.
So.
$7 an hour.
Because that's what our budget had.
Not fair, man, level one.
Paramedic.
That's a, that's a basic. I gotta pick $9. But as well.
11, I believe it's 11.
And this isn't a situation that's unique to the city in Nacusa, or even the area, or even the state. Everyone is struggling trying to find a way to, to cover pay the right people. If, if a full-time service has trouble recruiting paramedics that are offering benefits and health insurance, how do we stand a chance of recruiting paramedics part-time? It's, it's. It's the.
statewide, nationwide.
And not to not to diminish any of the surrounding communities that we service. But your populations are small, your contributions in the grand scheme of things are smaller. So even if, even if we asked you for $80 per capita, do you think your citizens would?
Go half that right now in a heartbeat.
That's where.
And that would get it done proper.
But again, it comes down to filling the hours. And we can't as a city afford to pay Rapids the rates we are now, when we have the opportunity to contract with them and pay them $67,000 for the whole year.
And no offense to Rapids again.
Oh, no, I'm not saying.
Their ambulance service, but, but now they've got you. You got rid of your equipment, your men, you're at their mercy.
Well, I don't, I don't think that's fair.
I, I, it's not to a certain extent.
We had them, our bid wouldn't be $25, it'd be 40, just like you were saying.
Yeah.
And that's not our intentions, our attention.
But the cost of business, you just, you just explain the medical costs or, and equipment, it's going to go up.
And there remains the, uh, possibility, obviously, that somewhere down, you know, in the, in the future, there may be an opportunity to station an ambulance back here in Nacusa. Who's that? You won't get it back. There. There has to be, there actually has to be something done at a, at a, at a higher level than where we're at. You should have put it out for bids, don't disagree, rather than ambulance services. That just. So. Um, well, just as a, as a point, um, town of, yeah, town of whatever, it's just elected to go with Rapids last night. They had a bid from United, was $8 per capita less, they still want Rapids. The lowest bid is not always necessarily the best way to go, especially when you're not comparing handles. Anybody at the table have anything to say?
Well, it's been a, been a long road. You know, it just, uh, we sat back and we watched what's been happening, what's been progressing. Probably going to do is just say the same thing Andrew said, but, uh, we don't feel it's fair to all the community, the citizens in this community who wonder where that service is coming from. This way here, we know we got, we're contracted with them, it's done. We don't have to worry about whether anybody's signing up anymore. And to what he said, I mean, it's out there all over. The moon can't get people to work. Every, every place out there is struggling to find workers. So to his point, you're gonna find them. Who's gonna come, who's gonna sign up for this? It doesn't happen anymore. Whatever the reason it is, that people have for not doing it, I'm not even going to argue with it. Everybody's got their own points and they're all valid. But so, you know, they sign up to do the duty and they haven't been taking the call. We've had to rely on Rapids running us in extra money. I don't feel we have any other choice. You know, if, the commitments made, I mean, it's not been followed through on, except by of, well, I am going to say a few, probably a dozen to 15 of the members worked their butts off on an ambulance service. They put their time in, they put extra time. That can only go for so long. You can't keep beating them up against the door all the time until things straighten out. They may never straighten out. You don't seem to have that community drive anymore to want to help your community like it was years ago. I mean, when I was on there, it was, you had people waiting at the door to get on the service. And nowadays, it's, you know, if it fits into my work schedule, my family's schedule, my family life, I'm not going to argue those points. That's what's important to them. You know, so they can't do it. So that's my feelings on it.
Yeah, being a dual role.
Well, as most of you know, I'm a dual role for the ambulance. I've been there for 16 years. And I, I'm going to tell you, and, and I'm going to be blunt. We've had some issues over the last few years. Um, we have issues now. I'm going to tell you in my personal opinion, if we are managed right, I think we could take this service and turn it around. I really do. You have probably, I would say 12, maybe 15 members out there, including myself, I'm taking anywhere between 250 to 300 hours a month. Um, and I can tell you others that are taking 150 to 200. We're, we're dedicated to it. And, and it's, and it's sad, the fact that we can't get people to come in here. You know what? Uh, when Heather said earlier she makes $7 an hour, it's actually $7.86 an hour. For me, that's a good gig. I sit at home, I'm at home, when the pager goes off, I gotta go. Uh, for the people that have to come and stay here, yeah, it sucks. But they had have known they were getting into that when they signed up. Um, it, it's a shame. I really think that between 15 people, 12 or 15 people, that this could could go, it could work. Um, I, I totally agree what Bill said. We haven't been recruiting, we got signs up at mid state that say, please come and work for an Nacusa ambulance service. Big deal. Um, you know what? I've never seen anything on Facebook. I've never seen anything. How do you think I found out about? I was in Florida yesterday. That's how I found out for sure that this was happening. I had to find out on Facebook. So that's my say.
So if I might add, you're telling us as a ambulance member and also a committee member or a council member, that you think that if there was a different administration, ambulance department, that you think that you could make, that you could go?
I think that.
Really think that after we lost Rome and township Port Edwards, and we don't have Saratoga, do you think that with the other surrounding communities that are here represented tonight, do you think that that ambulance would go?
Oh, I'll tell you. Um, since we've gone down to the critical care, from the critical care, we've done the flex. That makes a big difference. You know, if you have two basics going out, you're not paying them as much. Um, I can tell you that, uh, you, you know what? Your run volume's going to be down. Um, I, I can, I, I can just tell you, I've seen, uh, past chiefs that have let stuff happen before I was on this council. I've seen it. And I think if it was run properly, I, I honestly think it could be done.
So with that being said, he's sitting at this table tonight as a council member. Have we exhausted our resources as far as this ambulance?
I don't, I don't believe so. Number one, they put the word out about a referendum. Number two, we've had, uh, townships here that said, you know what? Nobody really came to discuss anything with us. You know, we would have been willing to pay more. They're telling you that right out. We haven't put anything out to the citizens of, of the city. We haven't put anything out. The, the few people that are here right now, how did they find out? Facebook, word of mouth?
Facebook yesterday.
Yeah, what about, what about the other, you know, 2,000, 2,300 people? Maybe the, maybe the city, you know, can, maybe the, uh, citizens will step up and say, hey, you know what? We need to keep that ambulance service. And we're willing to pay, just like the township said. I understand. Um, I just sat here and figured it out. If it's 25,000 or $25 per thousand, that's $1,500 more on my taxes. Okay? But now if we disperse that out somewhat to the surrounding communities, that's less.
After a thousand. That's for capita.
Well, you guys are, that's what they're paying you. He's saying for their referendum or their.
Yeah, for the referendum.
The city would still have to get Rapids, who were out of basic service. Rapids would still have to come for a paramedic or something, depending on what the call was.
Wouldn't that be better? To only have them come. Sometimes, like a crucifix, I can do, and have giving, getting rid of the ambulance altogether and giving it to Rapids. Cause I had my hand up earlier, just saying. Because my boyfriend put in two hundred and ninety-three hours on the ambulance in the month of October. And the month before that, two hundred and fifty, two hundred and seventy, I live with it, the scanner is twenty-four, seven in our house, you don't get sleep, I don't get sleep. But it matters to him, he comes home.
He's only one of the twelve that take the call.
We wish nobody else takes.
Heather and Josh and Nan are probably. The top three.
They are.
That do all those hours.
Absolutely, we wish we had forty of them.
I'm gonna get into seriously, tell them your name, leadership sucks.
We wish we had forty of them people.
Leadership sucks, I see it, it sucks, they don't get the support, it's insane. They don't get the support, you have a chief that tells people in February, the community center says, they have to do forty-eight hours a month. Doesn't enforce it. Not even a millimeter, doesn't enforce it. So you have a bad manager, what happens, then you get bad employees who give up and say. Okay, I don't want him to take the call, I don't wanna take a call, I don't like him, he's not doing his job, he's letting everybody get away with things that should be run as a business. If I, if I'm making. Am I, if I make you saying that right, because you, everybody has a boss. You can't get your employees to step up and do what you want them, what they have to do, because it's their job, then get out, sorry.
If we had fifteen Dan Downing, we wouldn't be here.
You're right, we wouldn't, but all the ones that are on there, they sit at home and listen to the radio, when there was a heart attack, when there's this, there's that, and they're sitting at home. And listen radio, and then we pick it up to go help, but yet they're getting paid to be on the ambulance.
But the, the point is, there's an offer at twenty-five dollars. Even if we dumped all this money in and tried to re- rejuvenate the service, ramp the service, Rapids would still have to come to, to some of the calls. If not most of the calls, we'd still be paying them off the side, and then what?
Well, I think it's terrible, you didn't give your city a chance, sorry, Dan, I can't, man, I'm just saying. You shouldn't give your city a chance, because this city as a whole, it matters, the city matters, what happens here, what happens to their mothers, their fathers. The elderly, the children that are playing out there, your children, everybody's kids, everybody's parents, grandparents, all of us, I had a heart attack.
But.
And I'm scared, if I have another heart attack and I listen to the. To the Rapids, I hear it all the time, back to back calls, they are slammed, I have a heart attack, he's at work, I'm on the phone nine-one-one. They will not get to me, I will die.
My group was not staffed now.
Because you have first responders on the ambulance side that will show up, but if you get to them and they're all on a call and everybody's being there, there's no guarantee, they're gonna get here in time.
Seven minutes, their response. Why don't you ask the county what their paramedic service, cause it's not twenty-five dollars, this is a phenomenal offer, I don't understand what the point is. I want fifteen Dan Downing, but it's, we've been here for three years, nobody is taking calls, the city of Rapids ambulance is in our city now, eighty percent of the time.
But if the.
It's sad, but we're here, I don't want that to happen.
Then they would need coverage, that's what I'm saying, shows back to no coverage, because it's not the worst.
But they're not staffed.
Adrian, not just managed, sounds like the problem would be over.
Exactly.
Motion to table it.
If they're public safety.
That's like, if you guys are gonna table, that's fine, I understand, but we need an answer, because we can't make a decision within a month to try to find coverage for areas.
I don't think, that's my point, I think, I think we should meet in two weeks, if we're gonna do this, let's do it, it'll be before, before, uh. Mr. Chairman, I'm talking, you don't even have a second.
Motion on the Florida table. Anybody have a second?
A second.
Motion second table of discussion.
Okay. Just realized that when, when that finally just finalized, when you guys accept or deny it, that still has to go in front of our council.
Right, you guys are.
And our council needs, so that means it would be seven.
I thought you were meeting two times a month, you're not meeting two times a month anymore.
Unless they recall a special meeting, just give me a, a warning on.
I just thought you guys.
Right, yeah.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
So, um, I'm in charge of the nine-one-one center, I need more than a month to. Um, give ESN numbers, um, set up, so, um, that's kind of important too, just, just wanted to add that.
Can I ask?
Sure.
So with losing township, I mean, we know that that's official last night, I've been sitting in on the budget meetings, I know there's no room on it. Are you just, uh, just delaying the inevitable, I don't wanna see the service fail by any means, but. We're already at fifty-one per cap, based off of, without losing any of the additional territory. What's that number gonna be now that we lost town of whatever, and where's the money gonna come from, from a budget perspective?
At this point, I think the only, the only way that we would be able to sustain it is if. We could. Oh. Well, it's, you know, we have five hundred. Yes, we have some options, I suppose, you know, we could borrow the money, just. Let us along, I guess. Or. Try to figure out if we can. Get a referendum passed. I mean. If, if. You, if the citizens, if, if the citizens of Acusa are willing to pay a thousand dollars more a, a year on their property taxes, to have an ambulance stationed here in the Cusa. That's where we're gonna be at. That's on a hundred thousand dollars.
But we can't guarantee you guys are gonna, and no offense, please, if you, if you guys, if you guys don't come in, we have to cover it one way or another.
How many?
So, we're, we're gonna say a thousand bucks, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna say a thousand bucks, and if it goes down.
It should be mentioned in a referendum if it goes.
Well, obviously, yeah, yeah.
If there's online communities, that would contribute.
And that's not even knowing, knowing what that operational number is.
Right.
You know, that's just a, just a wild guess, you know, just going off, how many hours you'd have to cover full time.
But it still comes down to, you don't have personnel to cover the ambulance, but we'd be offering full-time positions, that'd be different, that might be a different story.
With, with that kind of deal, we, we have the money to offer full-time positions.
And then referendum takes a year.
How long is the contract with Rapids for right now, what they're doing, is that just a two-month contract?
September thirty-first, uh, coverage agreement.
And we've been going on call seventy-five hours already this month, the first.
As I said, it's worth close to a thousand dollars.
What do we do in January, if we don't make a decision, when their contract expires?
Well, I, I guess at that point, we'd probably ask for a statement.
And I can't say we would or wouldn't.
Right.
It's, it is, realize when we're covering this coverage agreement, we've got our media, Finley, Colin, Franmore.
Covering all of them.
We're covering it all, that's a big strain on our people. This, this, from my, our perspective, there's things operationally we would have to put in place too, and, and that's why, that's part of that contract also. And that is filling an extra tier and, and raising our minimum staff, which gives us more people, when the time comes, that we send down. That doesn't happen, that, that part of our plan isn't there either, and then that's a consideration for coverage agreement, whether we would continue that from January one or not.
I'll request.
Did we get a second?
Eric Downing, second.
Motion second table of discussion.
Hamilton, no.
Yes.
Ryan?
No.
Larry?
No.
Bearing?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Greta?
No.
Downing?
Yes.
I have four no's and four yeses, guess what? So try vote.
I wish I had a bunch of reasons, Dan, that we can sustain what we have, we have been able to do it as of last year, probably. I don't. Don't feel that. By contracting with the city of Rapids that we would be. Losing. Out. On quality of service. Especially the way it is now. Um. The only thing that I regret is the surrounding communities. And I guess. I was under the assumption that the ambulance chief had given a little bit more of the. Parts where things were at, obviously not, we had discussions about contracts, I thought he was going to go. Who you, let you know what's going on. In those. Two months ago, and with the increases, that's all we. Yeah. I know, I know, we even had Finley set their contract back, like. We considered signing ours until we started hearing wind or other stuff. Oh, tough decision, I would say, no. So, I enter him, in motion.
Make motion to approve the twenty-twenty-two ambulance contract with the city of Wisconsin.
Second.
Motion second to approve the contract with the, uh. The Rapids. Roll call, please.
No. Ryan?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Bearing?
Yes.
Tom?
No.
Greta?
Yeah.
Downing?
No.
I've got, yes. Five to three.
You know, it's a sad day when you guys let this go. If you could find a way to make this.
Just don't understand. Fail so bad. That, that it gets to this, like, the people are, who are in charge making decisions. That's, that's what is very, this Rapids thing, I'm okay with. But how does the chief of the ambulance get put in that position? If he's not really doing his job, who's supposed to be supervising that job, who's in control of those people?
We have an ambulance chief.
Pardon me?
The ambulance chief.
Yeah, who's in, who's his boss?
Us, us, council chair, or the committee chair, and then the mayor.
All right.
This is just off the record, I'd like to say thank you to all of you. People don't realize how important community leaders are, and, uh, you've done a wonderful job with it. Didn't go the way I wanted it to go, but I got a lot invested in the community over the years. And we know how important you people are, so thank you.
Thank you, Gordy. Thanks, Gordy.
Thanks, Gordy.
Alrighty, so, moving on. Next item is the health plan, or twenty-twenty-two security health plan, we all got a, uh, note in the email. Um, and, uh, roughly ten percent increase. I did have, uh, representative from Harshfield Insurance, uh, Burriots. Justine Agency, they merged a while back, and they were interested in quoting us. And I also had, uh, another. Firm that had quoted us in the past, when. They weren't able to quote us. Because of some outlying. Situations at the time. Within our group. And they would like another. Chance that they actually have a. Group of municipalities that they use. As. I guess, like, a bigger, a large group. In order to try and break across the zone, so. I mean.
Let's, can, can we hold off a month and talk?
Well, I'd just like to comment as a participant and, uh, someone who has, uh, administrates, I guess, our, our budgets are set. And I'm, I can't speak for Rick, but I've allotted for that nine-point-eight. Um, in my budget I submitted, so I wouldn't. Wanna see our coverage change or anything like that, we have.
If it's, if it's same.
This is what they're gonna look at right here, it's gonna be apples to, I'm gonna match it. Give us a number.
I don't think we'd go anywhere except down approval wise.
Yeah. I mean, if it.
I think the public works, we say same thing, the nine-point eight percent we bought, we with John Trauman in our budget to get that set too.
But if they could not.
They can knock down five percent of that.
Or not even, you know, or be less than what they quoted.
Right.
Originally, that's without, without the risk.
I know, like, I know since I've been here, we've had security health through spectrums that have been outstanding, you know, the agency, so.
What exists out there in terms of multiple cities coming together consortium type?
That's kind of what you were talking about, right?
The one agent, the one agent that, that
I think it will.
That I talked to.
Come up with anything soon?
I would think, well, all they need is the, the, what do they call it? The roster, the I can't remember the term.
There's usually.
Unfortunately, and I've experienced at my lifetime where that's happened with my healthcare and it wasn't a it wasn't the most pleasant pill to swallow, but.
I just, I guess I'd recommend that we start this process sooner than the year. I don't, you know, things are rolling and it's late.
If we, I would think back in September or August, we should have probably started something like.
Oh, will these insurance companies, will they issue rates that early?
I think they'd start sometime and then I think somewhere around late August or September, they, they start running the rates.
But I, I get, I get the point. They're starting to shop, which
Are just cool.
At least every few years. We should do it.
When's the last time we reached? I can't.
That was, it wasn't that long ago.
Wasn't it?
Only like the, cause the league came in and then.
Two years ago.
And, yeah.
I would think of, I think we should shop and we should take a look at it, you know? I think that. Next year, we, we sit down and we get the companies together and we run through the gamut of this whole darn thing.
You know, I.
Whole logic to say. You know, we can get apples for apples, same company. I wouldn't.
Can different brokers get bids out of the same company? I mean, if, if broker A spectrum or whoever gets a, the plan from security health and broker B. Yeah, that's other agent gets the same plan from security health.
Where we missed Bob Schultz, he was our insurance group.
I mean, what's the difference?
What commission they order? It's all what the commission percentage. One might, might charge the last commission or whatever on the plan or you know, I would imagine that rates change on what the volume is, they might get a better deal on on something and maybe they could alter their commission or their fee or something, you know, I'm sure there's a difference.
The car dealer, you know, you Ford, Ford's got all the cars and they get different depends on volume, you know, they can get their wholesale cost cheaper by buying more volume. So there could be a difference and I'm not an insurance guy, but so I could see where that could happen.
What's everybody's thoughts?
I make a motion, I just read.
Right, motion to renew this. Health and threats with security.
I'll start earlier next year. Yeah.
Anyway, second. Motion second to renew insurance with security health plans. We have roll call please.
Brian?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Bearing?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Greta?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
I vote yes. Cool?
Yes.
And like I say, I like the idea, let's, in September, let's start this crap up.
And we could bring, bring, bring them in and interview, get them the roster and then get the numbers and see what we want.
I was looking at these numbers here. No, it passed Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I was looking at these numbers here and it's got like it's employee only, we have two on it. Employee spouse is seven. Employee, one child is zero, employee, two or more children, two. They have our numbers, so we know where, where we're at with it. So it would be, the next one, his family is ten, so.
I think we did this, I think Curtis Wright, like was it two years ago? And I think we got an email from one of the brokers and each employee had to fill out some type of data. To help them, help so they could.
Figure out, yeah. Now they want age and everything.
It makes sense to shop, I mean, right? That's, these days, that's the, usually the make or break of your budget. You know, that's the barometer for everything. Transferring.
Back.
All right. I entertain a motion to approve the excuse me, the various monthly reports. Motion second to approve the various monthly reports, all in favor. Both. Next item on the agenda is approval of the claims.
Okay.
Is it recorded?
Yeah. We got the three bill list. Gerald sign. Uh, committee meeting page for public safety is two fifty. Public works two fifty. Ways and Means two fifty. Council meeting five twenty. Property Recreation two fifty. Sliding Commission three fifty-five. Airport Commission fifty-five. Mayor's salary eight hundred. And committing the whole eight hundred and twenty-five.
Motion second to approve the claims. Roll call please.
All right.
Yes.
Bearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Greta?
Yes.
Downing?
Yes.
I vote yes. Cool?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
So there are any seminars not participating here, but. What's your journey?
Second.
What's the second journey all there?
Hi.